At 7:00 PM, call to order the regular meeting here at Aransas Pass City Council, 600 West Cleveland Boulevard, October 17, 2016, at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the invocation.
Lord, we ask you for strength for the ones that don't feel well. We ask you to give extra care to the ones that are take care of the, are ill. We ask you to bless our children and bless our citizens here at Aransas Pass. We ask you to find peace in our hearts and peace in our minds as we conduct this meeting today, all in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is going to bring to items 3-1, presentation of staff awards presented by Police Chief Eric Blanchard.
Mayor, council, thank you all for being here. I have three special employees in the audience today that were going to recognize, they got creative with the new law that went into effect this past September and how they spread the word throughout the community. But more importantly, the author and the family member of Carrie, for Carrie's law, mother and father are both here, Mr. and Mrs. Hank Hunt. And I'm going to let Mr. Hunt just talk just a little bit to give you perspective about what this law involves. Mr. Hunt, over here. You might want to talk to them too soon.
Do I need to face them?
It doesn't matter.
I'm not in, I've never done this. Yeah, my name is Hank. We're from Marshall, Texas, or were from Marshall, Texas, up north. And on December the 1st, 2013, my daughter went to a hotel to give her estranged husband the kids so he could visit them. She was seeking a divorce and was living with her sister. He at some point got her into the bathroom of that hotel room and began stabbing her. During this fight and this struggle, her nine-year-old daughter called 911 from the hotel phone, four times total, and all she ever got was static. What we don't do is teach our kids that 911 is 911. That's how you get help unless you're in a hotel, or unless you're in an office building, or a school. It may require you to dial a nine first, an eight, or seven. Some hotels require a four-digit code to, to, to get an outside line. Others redirect that emergency call to the front desk, or a security shack. With Carrie's law, all of that goes away. Any phone, anywhere, anytime in the state of Texas, 911 is 911. And they took the initiative to, to check the local business around here. I saw it, and I told my wife that I want to go shake some hands. So that's why we're here. He was gracious enough to help us out and take us to lunch today. That was pretty good. But I appreciate y'all having us, and if there's any questions about, in case I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir.
If not, Mr. Hunt, you can actually step here and help me present these awards. Each employee that I'm going to recognize tonight will be receiving the chief citation award, which is a very prestigious award to receive for their efforts to go above and beyond, and through creativeness in, in helping our community get into compliance and put an end to the, help end domestic violence. Erin P. Murphy. Darvin Lynn Pierce. And John Flowers. Okay, Captain Pierce wants to say something very briefly. Captain?
I honestly do not deserve any reward for this. All I did is furnish these to with some information. They picked it up, they ran with it, they made it their own, and when they did go above and beyond, great job, Mr. Hunt.
Appreciate you, Captain. But he does deserve it.
Thank y'all for coming down.
Thank you.
This is going to move to item 4-1, Aransas Pass Crime Board and Prevention District.
Mayor, council terms expire for Karen Mayer, Donald Brummett, and Naomi Fries, and they are all seeking reappointments. The board applications are attached in your council packet.
There are motions for approval to put them back, keep reinstating them?
Yeah, I'm making a motion. We reinstate Karen Meyer, Donald Brummett, and Naomi Fries, excuse me, to the Crime Patrol and Prevention District.
Second the motion.
Oh, first, aye?
Aye. Mayor, council, FYI, there's still one remaining vacancy, so if any residents are interested in serving, please submit your applications.
Item 4-2?
Item 4-2 is reappointment, appointing members to the Aransas Pass Municipal Development District. Terms expire for Terry Stansberry, Elizabeth Doris, Brian McLaughlin, and Lily Kendall. We did have a question raised about Ms. Kendall's ability to serve. The MDD district board members, because it is a special district with a special taxing ability, should be residents of only San Patricio County and the city of Aransas Pass. And it was brought to our attention that Ms. Kendall lives in Aransas County, and therefore would be ineligible to serve.
She's just in the wrong part of town. She's in Aransas Pass.
Yes, correct. When, and originally, just for the council's edification, when the MDD was first created, the only reason Aransas County was not created is because they were maxed out on their taxing ability. Otherwise, it would have included Aransas County as well.
I have a question. Mr. Stansberry was just recently reappointed by council. I can't see why he's turned himself again. It was this year.
Mr. Stansberry?
Yes, ma'am.
For MDD?
For something.
Yeah, yeah, because I sit on that board, and I remember.
I don't recall.
Was it the crime board?
No, the MDD board. Because he had got off, and then were short of person, and he was going to stay on, but they told him he had to get reappointed by council, which he was, the following meeting.
I think he just reappointed you just until that term expires.
Oh, just till the term expires?
Uh-huh, then he has to resubmit. That's the way I read.
Is that the correct way?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's the reason why.
Okay.
It's like time really flew by, though.
So, so absent Mrs. Kendall, there are, there will be still two vacant positions remaining on the board that also we are seeking applications for.
Right here, motion for approval for Stansberry, Doris, McLaughlin, to be reappointed to AP MDD.
Well, I make a motion that we reappoint Elizabeth Doris, Terry Stansberry, and Brian McLaughlin to the MDD board.
I second.
Oh, first, aye?
Aye.
Now, 4-3, Memorial Commission.
Memorial Commission, correct. This one sort of falls off the radar, because the Memorial Commission does not have any standing meetings. I actually had a few of the people who applied ask, well, what, what's our purpose? What else are we going to do? And I thought this would perhaps be one of the commissions that if we're able to begin that history museum that Megan talked about, this commission could be oversight of that museum. The terms are expired for Lou Arsaman, Jen Rubenowitz, Patty Gilden, and Manuel Buenteo, and they are all seeking reappointment for two-year terms. The request from the chamber to appoint onto the Memorial Commission has been postponed, and that's, that was the, the person who asked, what else are we supposed to be doing other than?
Mr. Summers.
Mr. Summers, Paul Summers. And it's a valid question. The, the board does not meet frequently. It meets rarely, because one of their items is the Siemens Memorial, and so it's a good thing they're not meeting very often, but at the same time, it falls off the radar.
Do they keep a budget of the city, any kind of city money or funds or anything?
We are not aware of any budget. I know you had mentioned there was perhaps some funds. We do not have any account that shows monies for a memorial commission. That has yet to be investigated and see what we can discover.
I don't guess Arsaman mentioned that.
Do you know what the funds were derived from?
As you said, she gets money donations from local businesses for the memorial, making the plaques when somebody passes away.
We'll reach out to her.
All right.
There are a motion for approval to reinstate Ms. Arsaman, Jen Rubenowitz, and Patty Gilden, and Manu Buenteo, for a two-year term.
I make a motion that we reappoint Lou Arsaman, Patty Gilden, Manuel Buenteo, and Jen Rubenowitz to the Memorial Commission.
Second.
Oh, first, aye?
Aye.
Aye. This brings to item 5, the consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council. Will be enacted with one motion. Will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member's sole request. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed, and the consent agenda will be considered separately. The items 5-1, 5-2, 5-3, and 5-4.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Oh, first, aye?
Aye.
Who was the second on that?
Billy.
Thank you.
This brings us to item 7, considering that the financial donation request of Halo Flight, $1,000.
I'm sorry?
Do we have public comments, number six?
No, we don't have any.
No, there's no zoning or platting basis. Public hearings.
I'm sorry. I was thinking of citizen comments. Okay.
That's at the end, correct. We have Patty Young is a representative for Halo Flight here. If you care to address the council, seeking a $1,000 donation for operational costs. I do believe the council denied the request last year, maybe one of the years. We have not been consistent in our donation to Halo Flight, and they do provide a much-needed service. You do have it in council discretionary, and so if you so choose to make that vote tonight, that's where it would come from.
I think she made my case.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I hope you're all familiar with Halo Flight. I hope none of you have ever had to use us. I'm Patty Young with, I'm the development director with Halo Flight, and we do rely heavily on our cities and counties donating Halo Flight. There's only two nonprofit air ambulance companies in Texas anymore, and that is us in South Texas, and one in Dallas. And so we fight hard to keep ours, a nonprofit staying here, so we can focus more on safety, which we absolutely do, then on making the buck. And we like to keep our prices as low as possible for our patients, and that requires that we need help from our cities and counties. I could talk to you all night about the things that Halo Flight needs, and we spend our money on, but I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I do hope you will consider donating to Halo Flight.
I've seen your, your people in action, and you're doing excellent job personally. So, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Right here, a motion for approval for item 7-1?
Yeah, I make a motion. We approve the $1,000 request to Halo Flight.
Second the motion.
Oh, first, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item 7-2, Mayor and Council, I apologize, is not in your packet. It is somewhat tied to item 7-3. There are new rules when applying for community development block grants. We have to ask the council for administrators and engineers, so that applications that end up to the state are fully vetted. In other words, somebody has looked at it and said this is a viable project before it goes to the state to get reviewed, and then they decide to fund, and then it's not even a viable project, and they've got to repurpose funds. So the request for item 7-2 is you granting us authority to go out for an administrator and engineering service in order to be able to apply for a grant. So they've added an extra step, but it makes it easier at the state's end in order to vet all of those applications through. We don't have anybody selected. We haven't even been mined. It's got to go through the normal bidding and procurement process.
This is just saying that we allow you guys to do that.
Yes, yes.
Would we have only use them whenever we are applying, or are they going to be actively looking for grants?
It would only be for that particular grant cycle. We'd have to go through this process every single time.
Now, is it, is it just for that grant?
Just for that grant cycle.
Because you said cycle, so I was just making sure that it wasn't.
Well, the, the, 26-
For that whole year.
Yes, it is the 2017, 2018 CDBG grant cycle.
Okay.
So.
Any other questions from council? No. There are a motion for approval for item 17?
Would be 7-2, 7-3, or?
No, just 7-2.
7-2, okay. Well, I make a motion. We approve the procurement of administrators and engineers for the 2017, 2018 grant application cycle.
Second the motion.
Oh, first, aye?
Aye.
So item 7-3, before that layer was added, we did apply for a CDBG grant through Grant Works, who is a grant administrator that works with us. We did receive a $55,000 planning grant that will help us develop our master plans, which include drainage, sewer, water, land use, and that is, has already been awarded. So this is a acceptance of that grant on, from the council.
There are most approval?
If, if I may, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The, the, the resolution in your packet has been changed somewhat. We, we consolidated items 2 and 3. It's all the difference.
Okay.
Okay.
So we don't need an approval where we did it, or?
No, you still need approval. I'm just telling you that what's in your packet has been, has been amended somewhat, but it's still the same thing.
Okay, thank you, sir.
There are a motion for approval for 7-3?
Well, I make a motion that we approve resolution number 2016-791.
Second.
Oh, first, aye?
Aye.
7-4-7?
This one, this one has rooted its ugly head again, as I, as I warned the council that it would. I, I keep telling the council and the residents that property values continue to increase here. Mr. Ochoa had made a bid to the council. He was, the first bid that the council approved. In that process, somebody else, before all of the other entities approved, somebody else made a higher bid. So there's been sort of a bidding war now. Bay Harbor has now made an offer of 27-5. What has complicated matters is the school district has approved the higher offer of 27-5. So it is back to you for consideration. The county of San Patricio has advised they will only accept the highest offer. So if you still choose to pick Mr. Ochoa, it's gonna, it's gonna bounce right back. It's-
Under my, the way I understand, I don't think, because they had a bid off, and he didn't show.
I, I'm not sure if he showed. What we got from Linebarger was the, the Bay Harbor. And from Linebarger's perspective, they're supposed to get the highest for the entities. And so if Mr. Ochoa could not match whatever the highest bid was, then he does fall away.
Well, I make a motion. We accept the bid from Bay Harbor Apartments for 27-5.
Second the motion.
Oh, first, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Which may very well mean an expansion of Bay Harbor Apartments. That's adjacent land. The next is a, is a presentation on the utility billing issues. I know it is a hot and heavy topic that has weighed on myself and the staff and the residents, and it is something that has shed light on a lot of internal processes that need to be changed, and a lot of things we can do better and need to do better for our residents. So I'll start off with, what was the root cause? I can tell you there wasn't any one thing that caused the problem. There was a multitude of things, and it was a, what I want to call a perfect storm. In June, we went through a software conversion. We went from ENCODE to ASSIST. The data that came over was corrupt, corrupt meaning unclean, unscrubbed. And that was because there are a number of fields that needed to have consistency, and I'll give you an explanation of that. There are about eight fields that fill an address. 101 North Main Street, Apartment 2, Rear. That's a lot of fields. There was inconsistency. ENCODE has been in place for more than a decade, inconsistency in how we entered. So it could have been 101 North Main Street Rear Apartment 2. It could have been 101 Main Street Rear Number 2. So things came across. In scrubbing that data, our staff lacked some, just very basic skills in how to clean it up. And so cleaned it up as best we could, inputted that back into ASSIST, and things didn't come across well. In July, tried to clean the data, but it was, I want to say, too far gone at that point. They spent the next month or so trying to match things up. And it's very difficult when you have basically two different systems, and at that point, we had added another meter type, because now we're trying to convert from radio meters to manual meters, to very old, old meters. So from the perspective of a lot of information coming in and not enough filters to clean it up, and what came across wasn't good, and we should not have gone live. We should not have gone live. In all of that came the need to understand why are we running out of time? Why are we estimating? Why are some meters frankly haven't been read? Some manual meters are broken. The Friday that Carrie called, or you called Thursday night, that Friday, I launched basically what we call an internal investigation. We had 10 outside staff come in and help. 10 staff should have been able to read 775 meters, because that's what we expect our meter readers to do, that, that pace. What came across is meters that were unable to be located, no standardization from where the meters are- the meters are at. A meter that is behind this particular house may not be reading that house. It's actually reading this house because of the way the meters and the water lines were installed way back when. So, in order for us to get to a point of consistency, we need procedures on how we read meters, one. We need procedures to make sure every single meter is read every single month and a consistency in those radio meters that we're converting, they tend to have dirt and things on them. So, some of our residents feel like we've not read the meter. Well, those radio meters do get covered in sand and dirt and they do need some maintenance and we've not provided that maintenance, at least not on a regular schedule. And then there came the issue of data input again, because anytime you add the human element to it, there's going to be fat fingering that happens when they've got to enter and the writing and who's translating and back into the, into the software. So, without having a clear directive on how this is supposed to happen every single month, everybody was doing it a different way with the sole purpose of getting the job done and getting all of the meters read every single month. Well, what would happen is they'd run out of time. The, the cycle to read and to issue a bill is very, very short and so they'd start to estimate. Now, in ENCODE, that was okay. That was our prior system because we have ten years' worth of data, okay? The estimating on three hundred and sixty months of information or twenty months of information is a lot better than trying to estimate on one month of information that wasn't clear to begin with, to come across. So, what the customer saw in the, what is the September bill for the August reading was basically the second month of trying to clean up some information. So, where does that leave us? Well, that leaves us clearly not being able to trust the summer months data, basically. So, the proposed solution is we went back to our old software system and took ten months of clean information, of what we know is clean information throughout those super high anomalies, which did happen in some of those months. And we have to go back and adjust all of the summer months bills to those averages. That's the fairest thing that we can do. People that had a leak, people that had this, that and the other, I, we can't account for that. All I can account for is twelve good months of information. So, July, August and September billing will have to be adjusted. So, what does that mean internally for us to do? Well, three people reading meters is not enough in a month. There are nineteen books to read and as the city gets bigger, it's not going to be able to happen. Even with the radio meters, they've still got to drive up and down the street, still have to download the data, still have to get to it. The fact that we are converting to radio meters means we're not in the alleys as much and the alleys are getting overgrown and folks don't maintain their alleys, quite frankly. So, we get into this cycle of, well, the staff can't reach it, so they estimate it. The homeowner sees we've never got to it, so it, it's just a back and forth and what happens is they don't trust us anymore. You can't trust the information that's there. So, we're going to revamp our personnel and during the second week of the month, every available hand on deck, which means fifteen public work staff and our three meters, meter readers will be reading meters and they started that today. We outfitted them with a tablet, which is about a normal size, seven and a half inch tablet. They have to take a picture of every single meter. They have to GPS the coordinate of every single meter because when I sent those ten people over that weekend, you couldn't find the meters half the time because the addressing, we, we don't have an address ordinance in Aransas Pass. So, Vicky might be eighteen oh one and Phillips eighteen oh seven and they're on the same side of the street. Because the way we address here is you only get an address if you have a structure. If you're a vacant lot, you don't get an address. So, very difficult to find addresses. So, the, the devices, and they were eighty-five dollars, the devices have a GPS component. So, we've loaded the meters. They have to verify the address. They have to verify the meter number. They have to take a picture of the meter of that particular read and they have to GPS a coordinate. So, we're going to load that every month. So, whenever there's a question, here's the picture of the bill. The photo also has GPS coordinate embedded in it. So, they can't take a picture of a different meter and say, yes, that was the one at eighteen oh one because the picture has a GPS coordinate in it. So, there's no manipulating that piece. But that has to be our new baseline for October and we basically have to throw out everything that was in the new software system and, and re-input the averages and then our new baseline this particular month. So, in all of this, we have scrubbed forty-one hundred accounts, probably no less than five times apiece. We came across residential customers who have a commercial rate, commercial customers who have a residential rate, residential customers receiving an outside the city limit rate, internal city customers receiving an outside the city limit rate, lots of inconsistencies and we need to simplify that.
Was that because of the, the ENCODE or was that?
No, that was just lack of. Well, it was, it was lots of turnover of staff in the front over the years and one particular person entered it one way and one particular person entered it a different way. There is no little pull down. So, you, I mean, there's some thought process that has to go into it when they're entering a new account.
So, what procedure do you have to teach everybody on the same playing field?
Well, we're doing a screen by screenshot that has to be in the book. There's no way to prevent the human error that happens even in this system. So, even if we create a drop-down box, they could still pick east or west or, I mean, there's, there's some of it that can be minimized, but it is a matter of accurate training and oversight. And we've got a lot of doers in utility billing and a supervisor who can't supervise because she's doing, because we have so many what we call triage calls. Well, we have triage calls because the counts over the summer months have consistently gotten worse. I want to assure the council, when I did the, what I did was I took the readings for the twelve months when I got back that Friday and I took the average billing. So, let's say your bill was a hundred dollars. I said to the system, give me everything that is above a certain amount. August and September have five weeks, so I couldn't use twenty percent because our, our usage is higher in those two months. So, I said, give me everything that's higher than one point four to one point five of what the average bill is. And it spit out seven hundred and seventy-five records and some of those are duplicate because they have McCambell A, McCambell B on the same house. So, it's about six hundred accounts of the forty-one hundred that had issue. As we went through the accounts, it was obvious that adjusting six hundred accounts, we may as well just clean them all. We may as well take this time that we're in it to scrub every single account and that's what we've been doing. It's not complete. We are at the point of needing to make further adjustments and further cleaning and I'm hoping that we're going to be complete by Wednesday of this week. We did hold off all of the auto draft. We did hold off any of the people that were on payment plans for anomalies before that. And, you know, the plan to complete the full meter changeout by the end of the year is in progress. The meter, the automated meter readers are not going to resolve at all because we don't touch the meters often and the dirt and the gophers and everything else. So, a comprehensive program still needs to be developed to make sure that we touch those meters at least quarterly to clean them out.
And now those meters, do you have to be directly over it to read it?
No.
Without opening it? Or can you sit at the end of the block?
The, the radio meters, you have to drive down the block. They're within a couple hundred yards to be able to read. So, you should theoretically be able to be at the end of the block and read a, a one block.
They'll give you the exact house?
Yes, that, there's a, a radio meter number attached to that house. So, we're going back, this week while they're taking pictures, we're going back and scrubbing every single meter account, every single meter ID, everything, make sure it matches. Because what we have found is, especially in the older parts of town, Billy's house may have been built before Don's house. Billy's meter is directly behind his house and the water line extension to connect your house was stretched to Billy's and your meter is almost directly behind Billy's house as well. And so, a meter reader, an inexperienced meter reader could very well get that confused and give you Billy's reading, so to speak. So, part of it is make sure every meter matches the correct address, every single meter.
Do you have an exact date when, let's say, like you said, me and Billy? But how do you know Billy could have got his meter before me?
The meters are sequenced. There's a sequence number. We'll know.
The ID number?
Yes, we'll know who, whose was installed. A lot of these are still, especially in the older parts of town, they're still the handheld reads. The other thing is, in the beginning, when you guys made the decision to go to meter reading, it was only the automated meter reading. The only ones that were converted to automated meter readers were the problem children. So, there was no sequential, we're going to start on Seventh Street, for example. It was only if we had a problem child on Seventh Street, on Young, on Wheeler, on Commercial, those were the ones that were changed out. So, when you try to run a report based on meter number, it's very difficult to dispatch a staffer and it be efficient because they're.
How many handhelds do we have to read those meters?
Right now, I will tell you, we have approximately three to five handhelds. My problem, my problem becomes the handhelds, well, not the handhelds, but the meters, especially the ones that are installed in the alleys, they usually have a riser over them. Well, people run them over because they're not painted any particular color. You don't know what it is. It's sticking out of the ground. It looks like a piece of pipe just sticking out of the ground. So, a, a lot of them are damaged and so what we're finding is now that we're actually sending the staff out this month to take a look and question, that's how we're finding things need to be replaced, things need to be reread, replaced sometimes altogether with an entirely different meter set.
And the three to five handhelds that we have, how long have we had them?
Since you, when I say you guys, since the council made the decision in two thousand and twelve, two thousand and eleven. A little bit before I got here, you guys had approved some bonds to convert to the meter reading and you decided on a software and a, a package deal. And originally, the intent was to pay a contractor to change on all of those meters, but after about two months of that, the contractor was having the same issue. There wasn't any consistency in the meters and the addressing and anything like that and they were charging us on an hourly rate. So, the money was disappearing very quickly. So, we made the decision to, in order to be able to buy more meters, install them ourselves.
Okay, and then the handhelds, how many times do we calibrate them? Is it weekly, bi-weekly, monthly?
I, I'm not sure about that. I am not sure. I, I do know that we now have two different types of radio meters. So, there's, there's a lot of things internally that we still need to work on in terms of our process. The only thing this month is to get a baseline for everything, take a picture of every single meter and start, start from scratch, basically.
Notice I asked us what, what I do, we calibrate our meters depending on how well they're working.
Correct.
And then we do it monthly depending to make sure our numbers are still driving together.
Now, every meter, every radio meter has a data logger inside it and if there's a question on the read, we go pull the data logger. What we're finding in our area is they're buried under inches of soil. There's, you know, wind, dirt, rain, all of those things. Surface drainage fills those things up very quickly. What we have not determined is how functional they are under how many inches of dirt and I don't know that we're ever going to get to that. I think we're going to have to be at a certain place, maybe within the next twelve months, that we go out to every single meter. We might read the radio ones first, you know, with the drive-by, but we still may need to go out and do the cleaning. And I don't know if there's something that can protect the meter or it would interfere, but those are things that we have to work out internally because it won't do us any good to convert to radio meters if we have to go out to every single meter anyway.
So, you can call the person, the company we bought from.
Yes, we're, we're, we're in all of that. I think right now, the public expects every single meter to be read and quite honestly, I don't blame them. My own bill was, I will tell you, in the several thousands. Now, if you go into my little subdivision, you would think, because it is a very simple layout of four houses surrounded by a pool, you would think that it's a simple T layout. It's not, but because the easement, unit A looks like it's belonging to unit C and unit C looks like it's somewhere in the street at a house next door. No consistency on how we did those things. So, part of the issue with the GPS is I should be able to send anybody out and as long as they know the coordinate, then they should know where that meter is and they should know what it belongs to and they'll have a meter ID with which to match.
Do we have anybody that can read a line locator?
Yes, we, actually, we have a couple of tremble devices and the, what is on these little tablets is a real simple GPS program. I mean, they really just hit pinpoint my location and copy and then they.
You know what I'm asking for, like the pipelines and stuff, to actually tell what water line's running where, to identify if it's a gas or electrical?
No, we usually call, uh, dig tests. Mm-hmm. We usually call dig tests. The, the utility service company is usually who comes out. Unfortunately, I would love to tell you that we know where every pipeline is in this city, but we're having a hard enough time locating the lines in Community Park and we don't have any ASBills for how the, the water and sewer lines, nor the electrical were laid. That's what's taken us so long to finish some of the projects in there. So, i- it's an issue throughout the city. There really is no consistency and as the city grows, we either get a handle on it or we continue to exacerbate the problem. So, there is a, a software program that we're going to be embedding into this and it's called Luke, Let Us Know Everything. And that is, the public wants to know. They want to know where their meter is. They want to know when their meter was read. They want to know the picture of the meter. So, we're incorporating something like that. We're going to go through this first wave of information, see how it feeds in and they should be able to see when their meter was read, who the meter was, what the previous read was and what the, the current read is. So. Any questions?
How many more meters to go through on the radios?
We're only about forty percent in out of forty-one hundred, so we have more than two thousand to go still.
And you think you're going to get it done by the end of the year, you said?
No, I'd like to get it done by the end of the year. We have fifteen people, but, you know, they have to read two hundred and, with the number of accounts that we have, even those fifteen to eighteen people, because the three experienced meter readers end up being troubleshooters, right? Especially when they can't find a, a meter. Those fifteen people have to go through two hundred and sixty-five approximately meters in a week in order for us to be able to, to get to that. I'm hoping that we get to the point where they can read it in three days after they get some consistency and the next two days are spent changing out meters, at a rate hopefully much faster than what we're doing right now.
How many can they usually change out in a day?
It just depends.
Because I know some of them are harder and I.
Some could take five minutes. The other ones, if they break a line or something as they're putting it in, then, you know, it's going to take a little bit longer. We had tried to sort of incentivize staff on the weekends to install them. We ended up breaking FMLA or hourly wage laws because we were trying to pay on a per meter basis to incentivize it, but some days, they could only install two meters and that was sixteen dollars and you can't pay sixteen dollars in a day to an hourly staffer. So, we've got to think of a different way to do it and the, we're pulling public work staff anyway to help us and so we may as well just make it part of the normal operations in a month so that folks know between the eighth and the fifteenth, meters are being read. They should be seeing people in alleys. They should be seeing people in the trucks. They should be seeing people walking up and down the street, in backyards, you know, those kinds of things.
A gentleman at lunch asked me about the meter. He said that they did some work and his meter got covered. I go, well, do you have a radio meter? He goes, well, I don't know. I go, well, the only way to find out is to give me an idea where it's at and we'll go dig it up. And then we can look and see if it's radio or just the old-fashioned. That's a question I'm sure everybody is going to wonder, like you said, the trust is gone.
What, what we, what I posted out on the internet and, and I want you to understand, I posted all seven hundred and seventy-five accounts or so, so, and, and it's all public record information. None of it is secret anyway, other than your driver's license, but the, the account name, the service address and the consumption. We're going to do that for all forty-one hundred accounts. So, you will know what your neighbor's read is. You're going to know what HEB's read is. You're going to know what Gulf Marine's read is. Nothing is secret about those accounts and folks can understand consumption, especially if the neighbor has a pool or they don't have a pool or everybody in that neighborhood. You know, we have a tendency to think, well, my neighbor's bill wasn't that much. I don't know how often you shower, your neighbor showers, but it's all out there for public consumption.
I have a question as far as going forward. Are we looking at implementing some kind of guidelines for like, for instance, putting meters?
Yes.
Addresses?
Well, the addressing ordinance has to go to Planning Commission first, but you will see it by December. Not just the addressing ordinance, but some processes when they enter information into the database. I think I probably spent the first forty-eight hours just trying to clean up the things matched because there's no consistency to it and, you know, coulda, woulda, shoulda before we converted and pulled the trigger. Not being as experienced as we probably need to be in software development and our IT department consists of one person. You know, hindsight's twenty-twenty. I just, I want to get to the point where. I just, uh, I wanna get to the point where folks trust the meter reads. They know that we were in the backyards, they know that we read them. You can see the numbers clearly, um, you know. A lot of meter lenses are broken, we have things that have green mildew in them, we have things that, you know, the average person asks, "When were you back here?" Uh, and, you know, to be honest with you, I sent Robert out with, uh, a couple of these guys just to get an honest opinion because he's brutally honest. And, uh, yeah, there was, we- we have some serious issues to address with the, with the field personnel. And I think changing them out, um, making meter reading one of the steps in the public works, uh, you know, you gotta get this certification before you move up. They gotta do their time in the trenches in the meter reading. And consistently having a different set of eyes, not the same fifteen. Every month will, um, start to make the process a little better.
I know, I know about the other council members, but the first one I hear, the, you know, I have a problem with water bill, first thing I do, I call up here, tell the city says I have a leak. It's in the plumbing, you know, which may, may not be true. The next one is, well, try to get all the city to match, can't get all the city to match. You know, so that's a repetitive, repetitious excuses I hear all the time. Then you get to a point, well, how much is enough?
Mm-hmm.
You know, what can we do? I know you're working on a program or whatever, but to try to eliminate everything we have. To try to make it right.
Well, and that's, that's what they're doing this week. That's why every single meter will have a picture. Every single meter with your address and your GPS coordinates. So that's our new baseline. Everything from that point forward is going to be what is true and accurate. Now, things you have to remember were thirty days in arrears in terms of reading and billing. So it, it turns out to be like a sixty-day arrearage. So the readings in August, for example, or the bill in August is really the June because our bill is the eighth to eight. During the, um, the time that people have leaks and are filling pools, those kinds of things. If we have a radio meter, uh, the data logger will say the time, you know, those kinds of things. We know when you're running a dishwasher, you're running a washer or taking a shower even. The manuals are, are a little bit harder to read, but when you have consumption of a certain amount and then all of a sudden there's a peak, yeah, there's, there's, you know, typically a leak or a flapper and folks don't really understand that. What we haven't been doing, and I, I don't know that it has ever been a practice in Aransas Pass, um, is a, um, water audit at the end of every single month. How much did we bill for? How much did we actually use through our own meter? Um, when I asked that question, the, um, response I got was, "Well, everybody, everybody's different." Well, we have to account for the water loss that we use in the hydrants. We have to account for the water loss when we make water line repairs. Those are all reports that we have to send to the state. So we need to be doing a monthly water loss audit anyway. So we're just gonna add one more layer. We build, and those will be public record every month. We build this many gallons, this many gallons came through the meter and this is the water loss ratio. And those numbers should match, those numbers should match.
It's like, uh, Sunday, or they're by commercials, new leadership, or they're by Walmart. First thing I notice, water running into the ditch is full. I notice it hasn't rained, so I'm wondering what happened, what's going on? I'm sure, I was just telling Philip the same thing. The time I see water on the ground, first thing I'm looking for is the damage in the road, infrastructure. You know, what are we missing? Or did, did I miss a rainstorm?
When I see that, I call in. Just to make sure because, you know, hey, I was going to work.
They did break something there recently, didn't they? They were digging something up, they did break something there recently. Uh, that's part of, there's a text dot repair that's happening in that area, but they were digging up because we complained that there was standing water in that ditch all the time and there shouldn't be, it should be draining out. So they did come look at it and before I knew it, there was back hose there. So I knew they were addressing something. And then there was a lot of water on the road one day. So they broke something. I don't know what the level of repair is because I don't see anybody there anymore, but, um...
I think there's an exposed meter, what I saw yesterday.
An exposed meter?
Yeah, coming between Walmart and Commerce.
Yeah, it was, that's the meter they broke.
That's the one they broke?
The meter, I guess, when they repaired it, they ordered the box, the box, the comedian.
Okay.
That's why it's still exposed.
I got you.
That's what they broke the meter there.
Which they broke, correct? The text dot?
Any questions from council? Citizens, come on up.
My name is Carol Salinas, I live on South Eleventh Street in Aransas Pass. Um, I understand you've got a lot of problems to clean up, um, software, mechanical, I mean, a lot of, lot of problems. But one thing that has kinda bothered me and still is bothering me in this discussion, if the meters are read on about the eighth or fifteenth of the month, we do not get our bills until at least the first. You're talking a two-week lapse. Uh, if I have an underground leak, if I have something that I don't know about, you're talking three weeks basically until I'm aware. The old system, the old manual readers would come by on about the twenty, twentieth to the twenty-second of every month. I knew, I could watch. I knew and I would go out, I know how to read meter. I'd go out and I'd wipe the sand off and I'd read the meter myself. Make sure that it was right actually before I got the bill. But you're talking a long time from the time a meter's read until a person is aware that there may be a problem in many cases. That's probably a software issue and I, I'd like to see that addressed. I just think that's too long a time, once the current problem is taken care of.
No, that's a human issue and I'll tell you, in the new software, you noticed that the bill lag time got longer over the summer. What happened is they realized, okay, things aren't matching. They tried to manually fix and, and the, the fix quote-unquote to the exception report didn't get quote-unquote fixed until about the twenty-fifth, twenty-eighth, thirtieth of the month. And then they'd hit go. That's not gonna happen anymore. Between the eighth and the fifteenth, the bills should be going out no later than the twentieth of the month. No later than the twentieth of the month. That gives us time to read, that gives us time to run an exception report. Any, any anomalies should come out and we should go and personally address those. And it shouldn't be seven hundred and seventy-five. So the bills should be going out about the twentieth of the month in order so that they're received before the end of the month.
Okay, so it's not gonna be hold the bills until the first and then send them?
No.
And not, another thing, a lot of towns, you've probably considered it, I'm sure, but do staggered billing. The meters are read on a staggered basis during the month. The bills are sent out staggered.
We're hoping to get to that point. Our new software can do that, so we're hoping to get to that point. Right now, I just wanna clean it all up.
Okay, that, yes, and I understand that, but the time lag for the future was a concern to me and to a lot of other people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I- I'm glad you brought that up because the, um, I mentioned the cycle being very short. So we read between the eighth and, let's say, the fifteenth, the seventeenth, something like that. By the time there were keying errors cleared, done, the bills weren't being run until the twenty-eighth, thirtieth of the month in some cases. So the out-of-town people weren't receiving them until the eighth, the tenth of the month. And for a utility bill that's due on the fifteenth, that's a very close call. So the goal is to get them out no later than the twentieth in order so that they're received by the end of that particular month for the next month they're due.
I know, that's something we had talked about as far as staggering the billing.
Yes.
Yeah, on that part right there. Uh, with the, once everything is fixed, will it send out some kind of a, spit out the report? Look at this meter, is a big?
We do now have an exception report that's part of the standard process. The exception report should say, just like I said, anything that's like above one and a half of the normal usage should be kicked out. And those should have a, a reread, go back out, recheck the meter, verify that it's correct and then notice to the customer, either through a door tag or something on the structure that says, "Hey, you, you've got an anomaly in the bill here, take care of it." What's, the way it's happening right now is they don't know until they get a fourteen thousand dollar bill. We actually had a customer get a fourteen thousand dollar bill. Um, and they're a winner Texan and only here part of the year, so.
Is there any way that the meters can be programmed to send out some kind of an alert before they're ma- before they're read?
They do in other cities. I had a friend who was visiting from Virginia and he got notice that he used three thousand gallons in a day. Uh, and so he was imagining that his, you know, apartment was flooded. I don't know what software or system they're using, but there is something out there, so, yeah. We can definitely investigate.
Look into that, just to kind of, while all of a sudden there is a big, you know, usage of water, some kind of a report rather than having to wait.
Is there anybody else that have a question?
My name is Bill Stevens, I live at nine, nine thirteen South Avenue Eight. Uh, I did get a little out of whack, uh, water bill. I've heard of some others that were high. My question is, if it's being mailed out on the twentieth, does that be mailed out from Aransas Pass or does that be mailed out from Dallas?
We have a Dallas, um, processor who processes the bills out of Dallas.
They mail it from Dallas?
Yes.
If it's mailed on the twentieth, we're not gonna look for it before the twenty-third or twenty-fourth, is that correct?
Correct, that's about appro- approximate time, yes.
Okay. Uh, another question, and this is directed at the council. The, uh, we've got the Hogan homes coming in. I don't agree with the things that have been agreed on with them as far as the size of the lots and the size of the houses. But my question is, I've heard tonight about all of these oddball setups in Aransas Pass on water. Now, I realize that some of it may have occurred in the past, but my question is, is there a building code, uh, which says, "This is the way you're going to set up your water lines and your sewer lines in the city so that you don't have this front and back and front and back and a screwed up mess"?
That's what's going on, I'm wrong, correct me?
Now, now, now there is. The, the piece that's still missing is the addressing piece for sound alikes and standardization of addresses.
Okay, cause we do need good, strong building codes here.
Yes.
This just stick in a house on a, a lot. And I do, I praise you for getting rid of some of the junk that's out there. But we also need to clean up the dead cars that have been sitting there for a year or more in some yards.
Yes, sir.
And I think that was part of your beautification project on Eighth, Ninth and Tenth Street.
Correct.
You need to get on Eleventh Street and McClum. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I think that's just... What is it, my AP, right?
Yes, the, uh, the addressing, the addressing piece is absolutely critical. In, um, every other city, you have a review committee. When a plant like Hogan comes in, um, and we just did this with the Hogan plant after the fact, when all of this kinda came through, they shouldn't have a CMIS circle if we have CMIS Drive in Pelican Cove. They shouldn't have a sound-alike Robbert Road as opposed to Roberts Road. It makes it difficult for nine-one-one, it makes it difficult for the post office and it just makes it difficult for staff. We've never gone through that process here. So you have Bay Court, Bay Drive, Bay View, Bay Street, all in AP, all within half a mile of one another. So the Hogan subdivision has been sent back. They've had to change two streets, uh, in that because they had sound alikes or similar streets exactly for what he was talking about.
Is there anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Oh, this isn't the citizens' comments?
This is, this is from Water.
This is not the citizen's comments?
Not yet.
You got plenty of time. Okay, so I guess what I wanna ask is, the ones that have radio meters, do the residents actually know that they have radio meters now?
You know, when I put the report out, I'll make it a point to put a Y if they have a radio meter. Um, the way we know is there's like an MX in the number. Uh, so we know it's a radio meter. I'll make it a point to add a column that says, "Yes, they have a radio meter."
Okay, just to help clarify, appreciate that. If there's no more questions, we'll continue on. This is gonna bring us to item nine-one, consider an act on submitting a permit to TCEQ for citizen collection station.
Uh, it's under Development Services, but I'll, I'm gonna run this one. Uh, I believe, uh, at some points, there was a discussion with the council about our transfer station. Um, we had a complaint from a resident about debris on the ground, et cetera, et cetera. We had a visit from TCEQ and in that visit, found out that the city of Aransas Pass had at one point a, um, dump, so to speak, a garbage collection center. That garbage collection center was closed and, uh, the council proposed opening a transfer station, which meant a series of roll-offs where trash was dumped, not on the ground. Roll-offs were dumped. And you began construction, which is why you kinda have that up loop at the transfer station and the, the, um, roll-off sit at the far bottom so folks can throw things over. That permit was never completed. And so we get a phone call and a visit from TCEQ that says, um, "Shame on you. You started that application back, way back when, several, several, several years ago and you never finished it and you're in violation." None of these things can be on the ground, none of these things are allowed, what you're doing here. So began working through the process with TCEQ and found out there are some things that we can do to keep it operating, but the transfer station as we know it right now cannot continue. The main thing is it is only for residents. We cannot allow any commercial debris, anything to be dumped there. Nothing can be on the ground, everything has to go on a roll-off. We have to have the roll-offs and we have to have a plan for those roll-offs to be taken away. We have to get rid of the shingles and we have to get rid of all of the brush. They're going to, um, turn us on to some perhaps available monies from the council governments and the state to help us get through that particular process. But, uh, that is a, a, I'll just give you an example. A mulcher, in order for us to keep up with resident mulch, is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Then you mulch and you've got to deal with the mulch because it becomes a fire hazard. So, um, looking at partnering with, uh, a neighboring county or somebody else who's paying it. Everybody's outsourcing it, nobody has a, a, an at-home mulcher like we used to do. But, uh, what's gonna faze the folks in Aransas Pass is that commercial tree trimmers and the like are not gonna be able to dump at the, um, transfer station any longer. It is solely for residents.
What steps, cause you know they're gonna be on the side of the road in bacon lots.
Correct, and that's, we've got to address that. That was Chief Blanchard's main concern too. If they're not dumping there, they're gonna dump it at the flats, they're gonna dump it on the side of the road. And then we begin looking trashy again.
I know at one time we had talked about our, some getting permits for the, uh, you know, the contractors that are trimming. And if a police officer sees, you know, sees, uh, someone doing work, I wanna see your permit. And, uh, I, I don't know, I don't know if that would help in any which way to, uh...
Well, i- it would because we'd know who's, who's trimming and who's, who's dumping. We thought about coming across as a contractor registration and for free and, uh, a, a number assigned mostly for like hurricane events so that we know how many roofers are in town, how many tree trimmers are in town, how many, you know, kind of repair people are in town. We've not quite gotten there, we've faced some resistance with any kind of licensing whatsoever. We are in Texas. But I think that's an excellent idea to at least, uh, allow us to come up to a tree trimmer and, you know, I don't think we can just come up to them, but, uh, you know, a lot of what's at the transfer station are commercial businesses that, that trim. And we are out for contract in, uh, in garbage. And I, it's no secret that we're, we're charged two and three times over for brush the way the current contract is written. That's something we definitely need to, to look at and look at very closely in our next contract.
Any other questions, item nine-one from the council?
So when are we looking at, um, a timeframe for closing it for businesses? Is there any dates for that or...
Fernando?
I wanted to start off at the beginning of the month, November second. It's our first Tuesday we're open. So we can be compliant with state that they drop by and they do see that we're still operating.
We're fine.
The reason, yeah, we'll be fine or they can shut us down completely. So that gives us two weeks to post it and, and notify the commercial businesses.
And I know you said two weeks, so twenty-sixteen, right?
Yes. And then, uh, the citizens will still come and get their vouchers from the city and continue the same routine.
How is that working with the vouchers?
It's working really good. Our complaints have gone out a lot by doing the vouchers.
Are we still doing just the truckload or just one trailer load?
Uh, they can do a trailer load, but they have to pay the fees for the trailer load, but the, the truckload is free.
Because I know, one of the things that I've heard is that when they come get a voucher, it doesn't explain on there that it's only for a truckload. It does, cause I'm, that's what I'm hearing. I'm going over there and I have a trailer and I'm being told that I can't because that's only for a truck.
I'll verify, but I, I wanna say we'll stay on there that for one free truckload.
Cause, uh, when I had got mine, I brought it up.
Well, it depends on, on who you are and how big your truck is, Fernando, so...
I brought it up to city because I did the same thing. I had brushed my trailer and they go, "It's only a truck." They offered, we got from the city, said one free load.
Truckload, it promises load.
One load, and then when you got, when I got there Saturday, I was reading the sign, the sign said... One load. And then when you got, when I got there Saturday, I was reading the sign. The sign said truckload, not trailer. Like, shoot, I already got in the trailer.
And, and actually, I think minus the commercial businesses, there'll probably be a lot more room for our residents every month there in the, in the station. We, we did ourselves a disservice because we said, if you came and you took the time to get a voucher, you're going to be able to dump no matter what. If we have to move it, we have to put it on the ground temporarily and then move it into a roll-off, we will do that. While TCEQ says you can't put it on the ground. So we, we're managing the number of roll-offs there at the dump.
Let's just make sure those two signs.
Yeah, I'll take that one back to the office.
And also here at the, in the front office.
Tickets over, so I'll make sure that.
You said you bring the what?
The tickets over.
Oh, I said. I thought you said you bring the kids over and I go, what?
We'll put them to work too.
We're a very family-oriented company.
Is there no discussion on the side on, do I hear motion for approval for item 91?
I make a motion that we consider submitting a permit for, to TECQ for the Citizens Collection Station.
I second.
First, aye?
Aye.
Mr. Blanchard, I believe you're up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just going over the stats very briefly. You'll see that stats are up. Over the years prior, traffic stops are up substantially over last year as well as citations that were issued. Staff complaints, month over month there. You'll see that the complaints are down a little bit from last month. Staff recognitions down a little bit, but I'll go down here to the highlights and starting off with patrol. We had several officers that were recognized this past month that you see right there to start off with. Basically, the common theme seems to be that we're running into drugs, alcohol, crashes, theft, and fraud in this report. And it's pretty much throughout the whole report. Detectives were quite busy dealing with rounding up people for theft, fraud, and related property crimes. We did have a couple shootings, drive-by shootings. It appears to be a family feud related thing. And we were able to get one individual wrapped up on that. We haven't had any issues since that time, thank God. And pretty much that's not too much that stands out. Training still remains consistent and steady. License carry training. We just announced a couple new dates that will end up this year for us today. We've already filled up the November date and the December date's about to be full as well. Everything's going good. I'll have this report published online for anybody that wants to see it in detail.
Thank you, sir. Now that brings us to our citizen comments. Ms. Vega?
Okay, Rosemary, now you're up.
I just wanted to take the opportunity to personally thank y'all for supporting Halo Flight. She mentioned if anybody had been in this room who had had to use Halo Flight. And in 2009, I woke up from a scare in the middle of the night from a compressor that my husband left on in the back room. And I jumped out of bed and ran down the hall and collapsed when the blood didn't flow to my head. And Halo Flight picked me up and took me in critical condition to spawn shoreline and saved my life, and my kids have me. So I just want to thank y'all for supporting them.
Thank you, Rosemary.
Good evening. I just wanted to come up here and give you a quick update on our trunk retreat event coming up next Saturday. If you haven't heard, we're going to have all kinds of activities for our kids, so please make sure to make it out there. We'll have a hayride that one of our tractors is going to pull kids around and give them a ride. We have a pumpkin patch with a, an area for parents to take pictures with their kids. We're going to have a movie showing Hotel Transylvania 2 for the kiddos.
That's a good one.
We're going to have a costume contest for the kids. We're going to have a contest too for the best decorated trunk. Currently, we have 20 vehicles that they're going to be there for sure, and we're still working on some other ones that hopefully get their applications in by the end of the week. We have a cake walk sponsored by our city manager. We're going to have some food vendors as well. And then for our judging of the contest, we're going to have our city mascots. We're going to have McGruff, Sparky, and Splash. HEB Buddy is going to make an appearance and we're hoping the Panther from the school makes it too so they can participate in the judging. We've got some goody bags that we're going to give out to the kids with glow-in-the-dark cups and all kinds of good stuff. We've had some donations on the candies from different businesses. We got all our hay donated as well. Really, for a nonprofit event that wasn't planned for, the only expense we'll have will be about $500 for the giveaways and we're looking at current sponsorships right now that we hope to give by the end of this week too, to purchase that stuff. So I hope y'all can make it out there and join us.
Is Civic Center?
It'll be at the, on the 29th at the community park.
Okay.
6:30 tonight. Thank you.
I'm explaining to the chief, he cannot have a clown.
Steve Warren, 617 North Houston. Just got a couple things. Somebody on the Aransas Pass site sent the sign where it says Aransas Pass and down at the bottom it says, welcome aboard. The board's all messed up on it. We're going to put that on our website. We should try to, make sure everything's fixed on it. As you're driving down Wheeler Street towards Walmart, I think by where that palm reader is, there's a light pole that's been down there on the ground forever. And you've got some orange cones sitting there.
It's text dots.
But we can't at least get the pole out of the way or something, at least dress that up or get that fixed somehow.
We have contacted textile and they're sending us all specifications for the sign. It is the city's responsibility to replace it. We can let our agreement with them. We're looking right now at what manufacturer does that for the weekend.
Yeah, that's been there for months and months and months.
I know. I, I hear about it from my husband.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Yes, sir.
Mayor, council, audience, I just thought I'd let you know, my name is Jacob Lopez. I'm a candidate for precinct four county commissioner. And I wanted to come by and tell the citizens of Ingleside, I mean, of Aransas Pass that just because I live in Ingleside, if elected to the county commissioner's post, I will represent everybody to the best of my ability. I've been, I was on school board for 12 years. I was a city council. Also, I've, I've been, I worked with the mayor in Sherwin. So, and I know Ms. Avrilo, I don't know if she remembers me, but, from the bank. But anyway, I haven't had the pleasure of meeting the rest of you, but anyway, I just wanted to make sure that the citizens of Aransas Pass make sure that if I get elected, I'll treat everybody the same. You know, there will not going to be any exceptions. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You're going to vote, right?
The demolition, when a house is scheduled for demolition, it's been approved, how long does that usually take to happen? I know there was a house on 600 Block in North Houston that was slotted for last city council meeting, I believe, that was approved. And I was wondering how soon that would start taking place.
Once the council gives the rule, they have three days before we can actually go in there and then we'll, so, don't we're coming up already on the next round?
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else? Now that closes our citizen comments. That's going to bring us to adjournment of the meeting.
I make a motion, will you adjourn?
Second the motion.
First, aye?
Aye.
Thank you all who came out too. Thank you very much.